Six o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome the guests. Two, call Row to establish quorum.
Chairman Clemmons.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Number three, approve the minutes of November sixteenth, twenty-one meeting. And November twenty-third, twenty-one special call meeting appropriations, expanded tiers, personal actions, payroll, and requisitions, and approve all the journal entries to be posted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item three.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Number four, public comments and updates.
I want to offer some appreciation to the commission for the lights at the Highway number one, Highway two thousand intersection there. That is a great thing, and whoever else, you know, needs to know that, we really appreciate that.
Thank you. That was a much needed, I think it's gonna save a lot of lives.
I hope so, yes sir.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say one thing. I was in the hospital a few days here a while back and had a little surgery done on my neck, on my carotid artery. Man, I had phone calls and emails and texts, and I just, I wanted to thank everybody for all the, for all the support they showed me and my family during this time, and just tell you all that I love you, I appreciate it. Good Lord took care of me one more time.
Thank you, we appreciate that. We've got some other updates here. I think Brian, he's our county engineer, is gonna give us some updates where we are going into, moving in forward into 2022 now, so.
Just like to first point out, because of this last year with all of the storms during floods and storms during March, October of 2021, along with over sixty percent of the days out of June and July being rain days, or the sixty percent of our workdays, supply chain restraints, and then limited labor supply, I would like to commend our guys on the job well done of at least achieving forty, over forty miles of roads that were initially planned at eighty miles, but that never happened, though it was done in this year, with all, given all the challenges that we've had with this year, I'd say extraordinary year for pretty much any kind of construction. And the guys did a really great job, there's several nights where they worked long hours through the weeks, Fridays, Saturdays, end of the night. They were frustrated, long, tired, workable, really think they did a great job, and I'm really grateful for the crew that we have, and some of our supervisors and our crew leaders, and then some of the guys who are specialty in the paving, laying down the roads and re-basing them. They really came through for us to at least get this much, given all the constraints that they've had. Again, we've got about forty more miles to go in 2022, and let's say, with this, we've spent the $2 million in funds this last year of the restore Coleman funds, and I'm sure the forty miles coming up, we're gonna try to come up with some view ways, I think several people have had an input on how we can actually increase some of the production this year, and hopefully with the better weather, we will complete the eighty miles of roads and reduce some of these workloads on our maintenance, reducing some of these spots, most of these roads are some of the worst ones, and some of the highest complaints for cobble patching and some of the worst base failure areas. And once we've completed these, this should reduce our workload and our maintenance significantly.
We appreciate all the hard work, man. Thank you so much.
I definitely thank the commission for their support and ability to complete this one.
Yes, okay, yes. Call, Matt Smith here to do our invocation, Brother Matt Smith, and then Tim Sartner, the EMA director, is gonna do our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Oh God, we thank you for 2021, we thank you for all the hard work that our commission chairman, our commissioners, all the leaders in this room have done, the outstanding job that they've done, and God, we just look forward to 2022 and all the great things that are gonna be done in Coleman, and God, just thank you that we live in such a great county, such a great place, and it's because of the people in this room, the citizens throughout this entire county. Lord, we pray for your blessings upon tonight's meeting, and again, ask your blessings on a new year that's soon to be here, and it's in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Pledge.
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think Brad is gonna give us some updates on the economic development.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just gave all of y'all one of the brief update of everything on the grants we've applied for and that we've gotten this year, and just to briefly summarize, we've gotten about 1.7 million that we've gotten awarded this year, and we have about 630,000 that's outstanding, so I think that's from historical, I think we're, if we're not a record, it's gonna be really close from what we can look at, but just briefly a few of those that we've gotten, of course, is 803,000 for the pandemic response center, that's the old RSU squad building, and then, of course, we got a rebuild Alabama grant, a lot of people, of course, roads is always an issue, we got a $250,000 grant for County Road 46, and of course, we got several grants for our parks through RC&amp;D, for the terrific CDC, and of course, a couple of the two I would say that's outstanding that are big are a CDVG grant, $400,000 for County Road 18, that I think will go a long way for the resurface that road, and some FEMA mitigation money, $170,000 for several roads throughout the county, that we're, hopefully that we will get those, that of course, the commission has approved of all these. So when we, I could go through, we've gotten several more RC&amp;D and further grants that we've gotten through that went through that, so I think those are great, we're getting our taxpayer money right back to us, so I just wanted to give y'all an update. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. Doug is gonna give us a little updates on the parks and Christmas wonderland, what that brought in, and some of the upcoming events for 2022. Thank you so much, Doug.
Well, thank the commission for supporting parks and everything we get to do, and you know, we got a fabulous staff, you know, I can tell you all the time, when everybody else comes to the park, you know, their families, it's fourth of July, why have you, you know, our staff's there, we kind of make that enjoyable time. Just wanted to give you an update, you know, since we've updated boat ramps at the park, this year we've got six major tournaments coming to Smith Lake Park, and then we do the best tournament there ourselves, and you know, it's got over, we've had as many as 496 anglers than that, so there's, you know, a ton of people coming to the Smith Lake cause of that boat ramp expansion, and you know, those boats and trucks don't get there, you know, without spending money, you know, and so I just want to thank y'all for supporting us and thank our staff, you know, that park puts on about thirteen events this next year in 2020, you know, and with seven people there and be open seven days a week, that's a pretty tough job, so they're special people. And our act center is up this year, the agriculture center, we hosted thirty-five events up there, you know, we only got one employee, and I've left there a lot of times when, you know, Gunnar not be there or something coming up at six o'clock in the morning, so he does a great job there, I want to thank him. And you know, Stony Lots, we, this next year, we've got like twenty-two event schedules, you know, we have a month, a night ride once a month, and these, the staff, they'll stay there till midnight and let the people ride, but they do it because it doubles or triples our revenue for that, that one weekend, which is our tax dollars that it saves, you know, and so they, they do it for that purpose, so I tell them all the time, look, y'all ain't gotta have this many, but they know it brings in money, funds for the, you know, for the park and saves the taxpayers money, so they're special there. And on Winter Wonderland, I just can't say enough about that this day, this year we was open thirty-one days, or will be, we got two more days after midnight open, and you know, we on track, what we got projected is 225,000, what we did this year, and I told the commission beforehand, you know, my goal last year, we did 177, I said, I won't hit 200 this year, because I think we're gonna, you know, at least hit 225, but Randall and staff up there, they do a great job, I mean, we, we're thinking the next year be our twentieth year, so I've got a brainstorming every night, I'm making notes and telling, telling the guys and the ladies what, you know, we'd like to do next year, so I want to give the commission and see if we can do that, and make, especially our twentieth year to make it more fabulous, you know, which I know people from Texas and other states who come in, you know, for the holidays with their families there, but there was a ton of Birmingham, Morton County, Weston County tags and all those, so, you know, I just want to thank y'all for supporting us and all the staff, I mean, I tell them I'm just the coach, you know, they're the boots on the ground, the one that makes it all happen, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug, for all the hard work, you and your staff. Number five, we'll move on to new business. A, recognition, Phyllis Little retiring after twenty-six years with the EMA. Y'all wanna wait to do pictures when, or y'all wanna try to squeeze in and get them done now?
We can probably do it after the.
After the meeting?
Yeah. Do the pictures after the meeting?
B, recognition, oh, that's right.
Oh yeah. Make motion to approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. B, recognition, Tana Brown retiring after 23 years with a sales tax. I don't think she's, can be here tonight, I think she's sick.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. C, proclamation, January twenty-two, human trafficking awareness month.
Good evening, Commissioners, appreciate you all having us here tonight.
Thank you.
This is Representative of the Human Tra, the Human Trafficking Task Force, Judge Rusty Turner, Kathy Wilson, District Attorney, Wilson Lelock, and myself. Certainly appreciate the proclamation from the commission, appreciate the opportunity that you give for our community to increase the awareness and the recognition for this issue, so I'll try to read quickly, so y'all listen fast. There's a lot, there's a lot here. Whereas Alabama's Human Trafficking Awareness Month was established in January of 2011 in observance of National Human Trafficking Awareness Day to proclaim the equality and freedom of all people to advocate for legislation, educate leaders, and to encourage public awareness to the various forms of human trafficking, and whereas human trafficking occurs when an adult or child is recruited, harvested, obtained, or exploited through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery, and whereas the United States government estimates that 600,000 to 800,000 individuals are trafficked across international borders each year and exploited through forced labor and forced sexual activity, and whereas the United States Institute Against Human Trafficking states that the United States is the number one consumer of commercial sex worldwide, and whereas the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children estimates that 100,000 to 300,000 children are at risk for being trafficked in the United States, and whereas in 2017, the University of Alabama identified 1,167 human trafficking victims within the state of Alabama with fifty-seven percent of those being minors, and whereas Polaris estimates that the national average of entry into the sex trade is seventeen years old here in Alabama, Homeland Security has identified victims as young as nine years old. And whereas the first step in eliminating human trafficking is to educate the community, we must work to ensure that all residents are aware of this problem, how to spot it and how to report it. We must work together as a community to bring victims to safety and to punish human traffickers, and whereas we ask all residents of this community to join us in raising visibility of this crime, whose victims are all too often invisible. Together we can become more informed and work to combat its injustices. Now therefore, be it resolved, Coleman County Commission hereby proclaims the month January 2022 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month here in Coleman County. On behalf of myself, needless to be, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Can we get a photo? We're gonna wait for.
We're gonna wait for.
Yeah.
Give us a little more room. We're gonna have to build a bigger room, knock out a wall. Oh yeah, yeah, did you make the motion on that chair? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve item C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. D, resolution 2022-12, rebuild Alabama Act Grant.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Commissioners, this is, as I mentioned earlier, we've already done one of these grants that, this will be another one for this year for County Road 783. I worked with Brian, he selected this road out of several in the county that would be most in need, and also, just as an addendum, I want to thank my staff, I'll get in trouble since Doug reminded me to do that, so for all the work they've done, not only through this, but also all the grants that we're bringing in this year, I agree, all the staff that I have, I want to do that, they're great, but I would recommend the commission approve this, this resolution, so we can get that, we have a deadline of January fourteenth.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item D.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. E, resolution 2022-13, adoption of premium pay implementations, policies, and procedures.
Anybody want to say?
I think John was gonna talk to that, is he?
Is he on? Is he on?
He's on, I believe.
Hello, John?
Hey, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Which, you know.
Hey, we're on item A.
E.
Okay.
Adoption of premium pay implementation policies and procedures.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have an agenda that on. So Commissioners, this is based on what was Brian's work session. I coordinated with Kelly Gilligan at the IAC in the meet, after our meeting there, prior to this meeting, and they have directed that to be in line with the American Rescue Plan, we need to adopt these two resolutions. One is the resolution stating we're doing a temporary premium pay, and one would be that we are going to adopt the policies and procedures. This would be twelve fifty an hour for each employee that qualifies, that would be anybody earning less than the seventy thousand, two sixty, and that would be over three pay periods, which would be a thousand dollars per pay period, for a total of three thousand for full-time employees, fifteen hundred for part-time employees, and then the, I guess the following resolution is the one stating that we would do that equivalent amount for those who don't qualify for American Rescue, and that would be out of the remaining CARES Act funds.
Does it temporary come out of that, June year?
Yeah.
Comes out of that, the ones that don't qualify, is that a separate, okay.
Will come out of the CARES Act.
Right, right.
Money.
All right. I'll make the motion to approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. A, resolution 2022-14, expenditure tiers of American Rescue Plan Act funds for temporary premium paid program.
This is what we just talked about.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. G, ratify Homeland Security Grant Agreement 2021-1 LOC IOC-25 for VHF amplifiers, any amount of 11,828, 100% reimbursable for the EMA.
Yes, sir, I guess this is my swan song. This is my last.
It's the last year.
Last grant that I had to sign on, and if you notice, it says ratify instead of authorize the signature. Under the new system that DHS is using, we have to file everything online, and we have to put a signature on it before we can even print it out. So I did that right after Tim came to work, before he was entered into the system, so that we could get this grant done, this is.
He was signed, didn't he know it?
Well, he's been signing that one, his name wasn't in the system, but we applied for a grant to do this three times now, so we finally got it done. This will put VHF amplifier in the basement down there, so that EMS and law enforcement officers, fire officers, when they're coming in, they can monitor the radio traffic on Milwaukee Talk. Right now, it's just dead, we have to turn up the consults in the radio, but this is gonna help greatly in the future.
Phyllis, we appreciate you and we love you, and we appreciate your dedication as a citizen of Coleman County for twenty-six years, that's amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Fellas, before you, don't go too far.
Don't go too far.
I want to thank you not only for your service to the community, but for your friendship, and I consider you a very good friend, and we go way back.
Way back.
And I want to just thank you for what you've done for the community and the nights that you've spent in the basement down there, and when we're at home and you're watching out for us and letting us know that, keeping us safe, sending out notices and letting people know that it's all clear when everybody else is at their house and you were watching out for us, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
And I'll just mirror what they said and say thank you. Make motion to approve item G.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. H, ratify Homeland Security Grant Agreement 2021-IL-006 for the state mortuary equipment and training in the amount of 10,000, 100% reimbursable for the EMA.
She said this is her swan song, so this is my first song.
You're a duck song.
But anyway, this is, this is to 100% reimbursement for the state mortuary team, and it's 11,810.28, and it will be for training and for travel.
It's 10,000.
10,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item H.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Tim, welcome on board. I ratify the insurance of tax exempt note on behalf of the Healthcare Authority of Coleman County.
Yes, the county was contacted by the Healthcare Authority concerning the bond issue for Coleman Regional Medical Center. They want to expand the ER to include thirteen CCU beds and seventeen med search beds, and another floor is gonna be added to the hospital. To satisfy the requirements of the bond issue, the governing body, having jurisdiction over the area which the facility is located, must approve the issuance of the bond. The county is in no way responsible or liable for any phase of the bond issue, so this, it was on the agenda as being ratified because the Healthcare Authority, they were closing and needed the bonds in place prior to our meeting.
Make motion to approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. J, authorize the chairman to sign amendment to IAC program.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is second amendment that allow more time for counties to enter the program, and then also set a minimum fee, which will not change our fee at this point, but it's a minimum fee of three percent to the program.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item J.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. K, authorize the commission to reappoint Gordon Sandlin as chairman to the local emergency planning committee for FY 2022.
Make motion to approve item K.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. L, authorize commission to appoint Tim Sartner as vice chairman to the local emergency planning committee for FY 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item M.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. M, accept the transfer of one 2012 Chevrolet Suburban from E911 to the Coleman County Commission.
Make motion to approve item M, I'm sure that's just regular transfer.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. N, consider a one-time, non-recurring pay increase for active employees making more than 150% of the state average annual wage up to maximum of 3,000 for full-time and 1,500 for part-time.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the next part of the American Rescue portion that we, that y'all were on a few minutes ago. This would be for those that don't qualify under the American Rescue Plan if they make over 150% of the state active wage, so it would get, pay them the $3,000, 1,500 for part-time out of the remaining CARES Act funds as a one-time temporary pay increase.
Thank you, John.
And I should add, to be divided up over the next three pay periods, so it would be a one-time payment, but it would be divided up into three pay periods.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item N.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. O, consider renewal of filter maintenance contract for Coleman County Detention Center with train in the amount of 22,586.85, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is renewal of the train agreement for filter maintenance. I spoke with Matt Hoag, and he, they are in favor of doing this again this year. It is a five percent increase, but it'll be through the, on the partners' cooperative.
Man, I need a job changing filters. Make motion to approve item O.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. P, consider voice activation system installed per code by ADS Security in the amount of 28,852.24 at the courthouse to be paid from the general fund. This system is currently affixed to the property and is less than public works bid limit of
Mr. Chairman, this is a system that's been discussed for a while to make notification to the people in the courthouse. If evacuation's needed, it would have different alerts for different types of evacuations, it would have visual hand audio, and anyway, it's less, it is a public works project, so it would lead less than a $50,000 detriment.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item P.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Q, consider authorizing payment to the city of Hansville for Mud Creek cleanup in the amount of 15,000 for FY 2021. I think the mayor's here, you got anything to say on this, Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Make motion to approve item Q.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. R, propose a plant, John Cook subdivision, a minor subdivision containing two lots located on US Highway 67.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our staff has reviewed this plan, and it doesn't meet our current subdivision requisitions, it's a minor subdivision, but to recommend approval of this plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item R.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. AS bid number 1370, award bid to US Foods for two conventional ovens for the Coleman County Detention Center in the amount of 43,350.94.
Mr. Chairman, the Commissioners, I've spoken with the general administration, and they are in favor of awarding this bid and recommend that too.
Make motion to approve item S.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. T, bid number 1371, to reject and rebid for tree service 2021-2022.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had an inadequate number of bidders on this, and I do recommend that we reject these bids and rebid these out by the next, hopefully by the next commission meeting.
Next month, thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chairman.
Boy, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item T.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Six, the next commission work session will be Thursday, January the 20th, 2022, at 4:00 PM in the commission meeting room. Seven, the next commission meeting will be Thursday, January the 20th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the. at six PM in the commission meeting room. Can I get a motion adjourned?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Meeting adjourned. We got the picture.